It is Monday, October 30th. It's the Moretown Select Board. We're here at the Provo Meeting Room. We're on Zoom as well, and we've got Orca broadcasting as well. So we'll get going ahead to get a lot of the agenda and fairly big crowd for us of four people. So we'll look for general public comments. If there's anyone online that has general public comments, just raise your hand if you would. All right, seeing none there. And feel free, folks, to interrupt. Sometimes I try to keep an eye on it, but sometimes I don't. Yeah, I'll get people here. This gentleman was here first. Are you with for general public comments, sir? All right. Nope. Okay, yes, sir, with the mask on. And your name, please?
My name is Bill Ziegus.
Bill Ziegus. All right, Ziegus. Go ahead. We've got a few minutes.
When you say general public comments, I just want to ask you a question about ARPA funds.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So my name's Bill Ziegus. I live in Moretown. I visited the town clerk's office last week because I wanted to see if the town would be willing to distribute some ARPA funds for the Man River Valley Senior Citizens Organization, which actually administers the Man River Valley Meals on Wheels program. And I'm on board of the Man River Valley Senior Citizens Program. I'm also a driver for Meals on Wheels. And Sasha told me that I should come to select meeting and bring this subject up. And so that's why I'm here.
Thanks. Do you have a written proposal of what you're looking for?
I don't know. Something that I could hand him, but I could certainly provide that for you. I could certainly talk to it right now.
Yeah, why don't you take a couple of minutes, talk to it, and then we can go from there.
Okay. Okay, well, I tried to do some research on that. I looked and saw that the town did have an ARPA committee and found in the document relating to that that the town had something like $497,000 to potentially spend. And I have no idea if decisions were made to spend certain amounts or not. But then I went to the Vermont League of Citizens and Towns website to try to get a feel for what are ARPA funds used for. And they were talking about the fact that legislative bodies have discretion over how to spend their local ARPA funds. And so I thought, well, then maybe I should talk about how I thought we might qualify for the Man River Valley Senior Citizens and Meals on Wheels. It said that one of the ways that funds could be used was for government services which can improve public safety. And I can tell you, as a driver for Meals on Wheels, when I deliver meals, I know some of those people, that's pretty much the big deal today. It's definitely a matter of public safety for a number of them. And it also said that funding is tied directly to the impacts of the pandemic. And one clear impact of the pandemic is inflation. We're all seeing it, and certainly my organization is seeing it, especially in our food and packaging costs. And as I say, I can give you something to write in, but just right here, we just finalized our budget for the coming year, which starts for us on October 1st. So we're three days into it. And in that, we see that our food and packaging costs last year alone rose by 38%, which meant for $39,000 to $54,000. So the $15,000 increase in one year. Of course, we expect them to rise again next year. It's coming, but we just don't know how much.
How many, how many folks here in Moretown do you serve on your Meals on Wheels?
Right now, we serve eight people in Moretown. Now, I'm actually going to cover that a little bit. Overall, you know, it's hard to say that every day, not everybody gets a meal every single day. But mine does for probably 40 to 45 people through the whole Man River Valley. And as I say, you know, some people go off, some people come on. You know, it's a, it's a bit of a moving thing, although it's not, it's not like they go off and aren't going to get these things. Our overall budget costs for the coming year are rising 36% from two years ago. For us, that's $42,000 in just two years. So our expected shortfall for the coming year versus our revenues that we currently expect to raise is $20,500. So we're obviously going to do everything we can from the standpoint of fundraising. And I think grant we can find, we're applying for. But we also figured, you know, we looked to see if we could get some support from the towns we serve, which is Moretown, Fenton, Waitsfield, and Moreau. So we're going each town to see if any of us have. But the most important thing that I saw on the Vermont League of Citizens and Towns website is it said, "Towns are using the ARPA, ARPA funds for," according to them, "support for local nonprofits doing excellent work that benefits residents." And I went, bingo! And I thought we qualified. And so specifically because I figured, you know, we want to know, how do we get more town residents? And so right now, we're currently serving eight Moretown residents. We deliver five days a week, but we actually deliver seven meals a week because we give them two frozen so that they can get through the weekend. And I will say, we are, we're favorable. Our drivers are all volunteers, nobody gets reimbursed for mileage, which this year is invincible. And we also provide commerbid lunches so people can come on Tuesdays to the Arpa Center in Waitsfield and get a free lunch. And I think partly they do it for the free lunch, but partly I think they do it for the social benefits of just being with other people. And we do that, it's all, you know, we fund all of that. And I'm sure some Moretown folks come to that, but you know, I don't have the numbers for that. But I just kind of played with them a little bit, and I just said, you know, if we're talking $4 cost a meal, and I think that's really low based upon what we're seeing these days, but I figured I'll just be, I'll take the low side. $4 a meal for eight residents for the year, that's $11,680 just in cost. So given that, I thought, well, I'm going to come here and if it would be possible, we'd ask if you could give us $10,000.
So you have a shortfall of $20,000. You go onto all towns and you're asking us for 10? How did you come up with that number?
Like that. I mean, we knew that there's, we saw 497,000. We knew, okay, so presumably there are some funds there. The thing is, $10,000 is just a one-time shot. That's...
Sorry about this. Somebody's got her... We got this muted here.
It's a really good question as to how we came up with that. And obviously, we don't know what each town will give us. We also know it's a one-time request, best as we can tell. And that will help us this year, and if we can bank some of that, it will help us for the challenges we're going to face in the coming years. Funds, you know, grants, contributions, the things that we do get, you know, some of that is, you know, tongue-burping, especially in times of inflation, see, people are, you know, find it harder to do generous.
Well, what I've, any questions?
I continue to jump something in. I'm on the committee, and I believe our committee is meeting on Wednesday to discuss different funding. And this is ARPA funding. Right? We are meeting on Wednesday, right?
I believe it is this Wednesday.
I believe it is this Wednesday. So, you know, if you could put, I think we need something a little bit more structured as far as, you know, it's, I've reached for a number, and this is the number. I don't think that's going to cut it, you know? I think we need to know, or it doesn't cut it with me anyways.
Sure.
You know, we need, I need to know what, what the money, how much money you need, and how you're going to resolve this problem in the long term, because this is a one-time deal. You know, if we can, we give you $10,000 next year, that really only solves the problem this year.
Right.
What are you going to do next year? So you got, you got a long-term problem. You can't, you can't expect a short-term fix.
Yeah.
You know, I don't think. So you need, in my opinion, to come up with something a little bit more substantial. Here's the number.
Yep. Okay, and so your meeting is Wednesday?
Yes.
Are you saying, you know, I wasn't sure what I needed to do tonight. Are you saying that she'd like something in writing?
That would be helpful.
Yeah.
Helpful.
Okay. And who do I, how do I, do I give it to, or?
If you, just bring it here to the town office.
Okay.
And to Sasha, once you can pass it on.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So the, that group will be meeting on Wednesday. They'll make recommendations here to the, the Select Board.
Sure.
And that's an ongoing process. So if you don't have all your information by, by Wednesday, but certainly the sooner the better. And you may, you know, ask around, you know, there have been a number of groups, you know, rescue groups, you know, EMSs around, you know, looking for a little bit of that money and maybe find out. I mean, they're, most of these groups are coming with calculations that are, you know, by town and percentage of, you know, residents using the services as opposed to your budget that you're spending and such like that. So it's a little easier for us to get around the number, that number that you kind of pulled down like that. You know, we'd probably like something like that.
We have to leave at 12:00.
Until 12:00?
It's not.
Okay, so I'm a wake-up. So you have a little bit more time to put something in there. Okay?
Okay. Would it be helpful to attend to your ARPA meeting?
I'd say cool. Again, I think it's at 6:30?
6:30? Okay.
On the 12?
Okay.
Am I right? 6:00 or 6:30?
6:30.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Very good. And didn't let you back.
I'm on the Provo Room, and I'm just following up on the last Select Board meeting. We had the hearing, both in Kiowa and 1013, but we're in group 103. The deadline has come down. It was last Monday. The Select Board said they were holding emergency meetings so they could file, give the work of the court to file a court order. Just checking in, how's that going?
Good. We have, actually, on the meeting agenda tonight at 7:15, we're going into an executive session to discuss what has been happening with our lawyer in the last week. So there's not much I can tell you just because it's legal stuff, but I can...
Is that added to the agenda today because it wasn't on the agenda?
No, it was on the agenda I approved on last Friday. So I can't tell you, again, it's confidential stuff, but it is working towards a resolution.
So we will file paperwork with the court?
We gotta, I gotta, we gotta discuss everything with the, with the board tonight, and we'll make a decision on what we're doing after the executive session.
So it'll be a different decision as made two weeks ago at the last Select Board meeting?
I wasn't here for that discussion. I saw it on, on our meeting notes, but this is all due, stuff that our lawyers bring into us, so it's going to be discussed and decided upon.
Mr. Ron Schems, who suggested that we file a...
Yes.
Yeah, this, this came about after the last meeting. We felt that there was no reason for an emergency meeting. At least Ron Schems didn't think that we needed an emergency meeting.
Okay. But the deadline has come down, and the next step would be to file a court order?
That's correct.
All right. Did you have a list next door, or are you together? All right, check that there's no other general public comment. All right, so we'll go ahead and move on to the agenda. You have Cheryl Lynn Brown, the treasurer here with the health insurance. Just right at the end here, Smut. Please.
So it's time to renew the health insurance again this year. And Craig has gone over different policies and everything, and he highly recommends that we continue staying with what we have currently. In 2021, we were, if you guys remember, we were able to get money refunded back to us if our claims and stuff were going well. So we ended up getting $3,300 in 2021 for 2020 claims. And as of right now, the numbers aren't in until the end of September, but we are, still have a surplus for 2022 claims of $7,100. So the difference in the policy, because everything is going up, as everyone knows with COVID, the hospital budgets were renewed, and they're much higher than usual for 2023 because of everything that we've been going through. So the increase will be $7,600. So he highly recommends that we stay with what we have. We have to sign up for it. We're on a deadline. So if you look at the surplus, we're really not going to be, if that surplus stays the same, we're really not going to be increasing.
What's the $7,500 increase?
$7,600 increase. I have these for you, too.
Same policy, not any more insurance?
No, exact same policy that we have now. So if you look at the column in the 2021 plan, where it's in black, that's what we currently have. If you go to the middle where it says 2023 plan, that's, that's the same exact plan that we have now, but with the increase.
Get this even smaller, huh?
Sorry.
I was going to say that.
Well, you want some more leg?
Funny, funny, but...
No, I got it. I probably put this on Sasha.
I can't read that.
So when is, when is, when do we have to make this decision?
I have to have it back to them. These rates that we're getting are only valid until October 27th. So if we don't sign up, there's a good possibility that the rates could go up. And he did look at other possibilities, and there was nothing that was comparable to what we have. He said that there's no other option that is as simple as we have now, and we'll have more out of pocket to empty, to the employees if we switch.
And there's going to be fewer people next year, right?
No.
I thought we...
That's just right now.
Right now.
So if we, if we go with the renewing our policy, did you say it's an 8.4% increase?
No, it's actually, it's 11.1%.
Yeah, I see 11.1 here.
Yeah, it's 11.1.
And 8.4 is down to lower.
Right, but the whole, the difference...
Overall?
Overall, it's 11.1.
Yeah, overall is 11.1.
Right. I think 8.7 is with 3,300.
Right.
The rebate, everything back.
Oh, okay, I get you. Presumably, the savings could keep it level.
Exactly where we're at right now. It, it all depends on the claims that come in between now and then.
Did you say December or September? December, the end of the seventh, the 2022. For the, the 3,300, that...
The 3,300 came in, in 2021 for 2020 claims. So it's basically, we don't get our refund until the following year. So when we put it in our budget for this, and the funds come back, it'll offset.
Right. And through September dawn, there's 7,100.
Yeah, that's okay. This year.
So no one getting sick, that's...
Right. So if you decide that you want to stay with us, this is what needs to be sent back to Craig.
Why don't we go ahead and make this decision now? Ray, did you have any reason why you didn't want to?
Yep, no, I, I would like to make the motion if we... Actually, I have a couple of questions. Refresh me again. What's available through the league?
The...
Through VLCT?
Through VLCT is Vermont Health Connect with Blue Cross Blue Shield, and he looked into that, and it was going to cost the town more money.
Okay.
And the policy wasn't...
Did you get anything from the league?
I have not received anything from them. And, but he went in and looked at it, and he said that it also wasn't going to benefit the employees. It was not as good of a health insurance that we currently have.
Okay.
He said it was going to be a lot more than...
I kind of wish you had gotten in touch with me prior to this.
I just barely got this.
Well, if you want to go ahead and wait, John, we can, our next meeting is prior to the due date on this.
Yeah, you have it right there.
Yeah.
Well, I wouldn't want to jeopardize it going up either.
No, the quote expires on October 27th.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we have another meeting this week, so...
Unfortunately, I'll be away.
Well, what you can do is research that you want to do. That's what you're, I know you're retired, but because you've done that, I think you should give you the shot to take a look at it.
Yeah.
Make sure due diligence, not going to cost us anything to take a look.
Do you want me to take that back and hold on to that? So it doesn't get lost?
This?
No, I just barely received this. I think it was Friday, John, or it was, I called you for a meeting.
All right. Is there anything else that you should know about it, Ben, Cheryl Lynn?
No.
Or that John should know?
Not that I'm aware of.
All right, so let's go ahead and move on. We'll end up, John, you'll take a look at that, and Cheryl Lynn, if you could work with John with VLCT just to get something sort of...
Yeah, haven't received anything from them yet, which is really odd.
Really?
From the Blue Cross Blue Shield help. Normally, they send stuff out, and you haven't yet.
Well, could, I mean, that they sent everybody, not only, not just people that are already with them, usually?
Usually, I get something with all, everything, and I haven't yet. Just don't forget those minutes.
I will not forget this. Mind me. There's a change on the minutes. All right, so let's go ahead. On the agenda, we're close to being on time. We have Clark, who's on Zoom, who had a, what'd you say, a doozy of a cold, Clark?
That would be correct, sir.
All right, well, thank you for not coming in.
Yeah.
Everyone appreciates that. So go ahead, you're going to talk about the village wastewater.
Yes, I am. Not much of an update. The, Cheryl Lynn was gracious to meet with me about a month ago or so and work on the loan application, which is now, that iteration is in with Tom Brown for him to take a look at and see where we are at. And so far, I have received, or the town has received, a soils map of sorts from Otter Creek indicating certain properties in town that might be worth looking at in terms of possible sighting, you know, meaning possible test pits and that sort of thing. And so at this point, I'd like to talk with Otter Creek before we take the next step in terms of talking with some of the landowners, property owners, just so I know a little bit more about how to explain the process and, and that kind of thing. And it's been a little challenging getting in touch with Otter Creek the last few weeks, so that's been something that, that I need to resolve as well so that we can feel like things are moving on. At least I understand, or we understand a little bit more about what's going on from their end. Let's see, I did clarify, and I think I may have sent this to you, Tom, the explanation about the zero-interest loan. And the town will not be on any kind, there's no expectation for the town to repay the loan. In this case, the feasibility study could be shelved possibly and not acted upon, and it's, the town is under no obligation to pay for the feasibility study. Now, I say shelved, I don't necessarily mean put away and forgotten, but just the information is there for the town to, to use at some point, and it could be, you know, proceeding with a discussion about whether or not to, to take a look at bonding and other funds to, to build such a system and build community support. Or it could be that based on the estimation of the cost and available funds, that waiting might be a better option. But at this point, we're hoping to try to get some test pits dug before the end of probably the early to mid-December or so, before things really kind of freeze up and become unavailable. And once I get an indication back from the state in terms of how we've done so far in filling out the loan application, there's elements of that that need to be completed by Otter Creek, and then we can send it in. And, and then the negotiation at that point begins in terms of what the, the scale of the feasibility study will be in terms of costs. And in that case, since the state is fronting that money, they're the ones that will be working with Otter Creek. I mean, with the town as well, but mostly with Otter Creek to come up with what they plan on, you know, how, with what the feasibility study is going to cost. So that's where we are at. I'm hoping that by the, probably in a couple of weeks, to have some conversations with some landowners and see whether people are, might be interested in having, you know, it's a tricky, you know, it's not necessarily a sell, but just making sure that I can explain adequately what their response, their options would be if they are willing to have a, some test pits dug on their property. Part of the explanation is that, that there is money available to purchase property for such a system, and that purchase would not be funded by the town in this case. It would be state funds that would be available for that. And, but at what rate, whether it's fair market value or praised value, I'm not sure. That's something that, you know, we would, that's one of some of the questions I need to find out before we proceed. So in a nutshell, that's, that is where the process is at this current time.
Good. It sounds like you're, you're slowly making progress, and you hope to meet with Otter Creek sometime in the next week to get that cleared up?
Yeah.
Kind of kind of work together?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to just make sure that we get a, a regular schedule put forth so that we can check in on a routine basis.
Ray, any questions?
Yeah, Clark, after our conversation last week, I did reach out to Otter Creek. Unfortunately, I didn't have any more, I looked muted. I don't, I really, I don't know what's going on with Robert, but I did, I had his, I have his personal phone number, and I left a message, so I'm quite sure he got it. I just don't, I don't know.
Well, I'll follow up tomorrow and be a little bit more insistent that we...
Yeah.
Connection here.
Yeah, and I'll reach out to him again, too. I wasn't sure if he got hold of you or not, and didn't tell me, but I was going to call you, but I did. But, okay, so if we both start aiming at him, you know, hopefully.
Yeah, we can, we can get some movement here.
Okay.
Yeah. And are there any other questions at this time?
The board have any questions? Kelly? I don't think so. So Clark, you're, there's nothing you need from us going forward here?
No, I just wanted to do an update, and I guess I probably should do one at the, the first meeting in November as well, so. And I apologize for being unavailable on the 19th. That was my, my mistake, so I apologize for that.
Oh, that's all right. Worked out just fine. All right, Clark, well, thank you. I hope you get well. Take care of yourself.
All right. Thank you very much. It's a long...
Bye, Clark.
John, you want to grab a seat?
Sure.
People coming in. All right, so we'll move ahead. We have at 6:35. And we're a little ahead, but that's good. We have McCain Consulting inquiring about a leaking trail. And so we've got Governor McCain on Zoom. Is there anyone else with him tonight? And you are?
Josh Rebeiro.
Say again?
Josh Rebeiro.
Josh Rebeiro. All right. Mr. McCain, go ahead.
Sure. So my client, who is Josh Rebeiro, has a piece of ground...
Sure, so my client, who is Josh Ribeiro, uh, has a piece of ground off of the Moretown Mountain Road, which is accessed by Legal Trail eleven. Uh, and then a right of way through private land. So in order to get access to his land, he'd like to upgrade about a thousand feet of Legal Trail eleven. Uh, we did send in a little map showing where that is in the real world, so folks, you know, would have an idea of where that looks like. Uh, I think Legal Trail eleven, as it continues through, actually connects into Herring Brook Road, uh, up off of John Brook Road. But we're not going nearly that far, like I say, about a thousand feet. So this, the purpose of this inquiry is to ask you folks, um, what do you need for Josh to be able to do that? Or is it, is it just a matter of asking, and he, he can go in and do the improvements, um. Just asking those questions and start that ball rolling. So I guess that's the question for you guys. Is, do we need to do more than just submit a couple of forms? Um, what kind of information would you like to see?
Well, sure, we do have, um. A, a form to fill out. You may have seen the, uh, working in the road, uh, roadways. Form, we have that online. We can also get that from Cheryl Lynn, um. Yeah, very easy. Um, Martin, our, um. Road foreman will also have some input on really what needs to be done on the trail. Uh, we've had recent, um, circumstance on the other side of town. Where someone's building out on a, what used to be a legal trail, or still is a legal trail. Uh, so Ray has worked with Martin and the landowner to make sure, um. That it's going to be able to provide access, uh, and address for emergency vehicles. That's one of the important things that, uh, we're finding, uh, that we need to be doing on these, um. Martin, did you have any?
You know, I, I want that trail with another potential land buyer. It's very deceiving, um, where the trail appears to be is a old logging road. Um, that they built what looks like. Somewhat parallel to what would actually be the legal trail. So I think the tricky part of that is. Knowing exactly what you're upgrading, you're not dumping money into something that is not a legal trail, and then. Come find out, you know, through court proceedings that you've just dunked. A lot of money into somebody's property that's not town property. That's going to be the tricky part of that one, I think.
Have you had any, um, surveys done at all, Josh?
Um, I don't believe so on that part of the right way.
So I think that would, I was going to bring up the same topic, Martin. I don't know if we know exactly where the right of way is up through there, you know, it's. It's been used quite a bit, it's been moved over, or. You know, it really needs to be surveyed, I think. In this case, I think by the, the person who wants to do the work to make sure that it's in the right of way.
Yeah, and then, uh. I think that's the trickiest question is make sure where it is, and then. I mean, we don't have any opposition here, I don't think, to, to doing the work, as long as it's done. Again, with, uh. Safety involved, you know, that we know that, uh, analysts and fire equipment can get it out. That's the standard we've been using. We, we've got actually the planning commission and, uh. Some of the DRB members come tonight to talk about these type of things. So probably the quicker the better.
All right, so if I, I, I couldn't understand everything that was being said in the background just because of the, the Zoom microphone and whatnot. But we would work with. Mr. Martin as the road foreman to make sure we're understanding what the upgrades are after we go in and do a survey. To make sure we understand exactly where the road is. Is that what I understand?
Yeah, Mr. Cameron, Martin Cameron, um.
Over here.
Yep. Uh, that would be correct. And does anyone else have any other thoughts on that?
No, no, that's. It sounds like that's the route we should go. Yeah, I'd be glad to work with Martin as well. You know, in fact, I'd like to, might be a part of this.
All right, because you were on the other road over here, so it's probably a good idea.
Yeah.
And there, you can go back and you can talk with Martin and, and Ray here. I mean, I think there was a couple of little pull-offs that we, uh, provided in case people are traveling back and forth, but. We're not looking to make you jump through hoops or do anything crazy, but it, but it. Needs to be done to a certain degree that, uh, the road foreman and then Ray, who's worked with, uh, who just retired from DuVoys as an engineer. You know, if you can work with them and you know where it is. You know, we can push forward.
Sound good, thank you.
Mr. McCain? All right, so if there's any other questions right now, um. Shoot them out, or we can move forward.
I, I think that's it for now for us. Appreciate your time, thank you.
All right, sir. Josh? And we'll now move on, so. Now we have the discussion with the DRB, the planning commission, um. And road department on, uh, issues with class four and legal trails. Yeah.
Craig O'Shea's term on the DRB has expired, and he has actually shown interest that he wants to be reappointed, and he's afraid he's still in place.
So you're saying he'd like to do that before?
Yeah, probably want to do that before he gets involved in conversations.
All right. All right, um.
I'll make a motion to appoint him.
To reappoint?
To reappoint.
Second, all right, I'll, uh, favor the, uh, the motion? Hi. Hi, all right. Thank you, Senator. All right, um, John, why don't you, Greg, John, um. Deborah, sorry, Deborah, Martin? Why don't you guys move up around the table here? Greg, go ahead as well.
I got a meeting tonight, I tried. There's still a lot of COVID around.
Oh, that's fine, that's, that's good. Well, first, I want to thank everyone. Kelly, do you mind moving down just a little bit, please? Um. You know, we don't, as, as a group, get together with, with the other boards that often. Uh, so pleased that a couple of, I know we've got Dave Stapleton, uh, online as well. Stefan, the, the fire department chief, um, who usually has a lot to say about these type of issues as well, Martin, but. Um, in general, I wanted to talk about, um, issues that you just saw coming before us, and John, we've, I know we've had. Uh, some discussions with you about as far as, uh, our legal trails. Class four roads, um, and now that people are really looking for land and starting to purchase these, uh. Parcels, you know, do we need to do anything as, as a board? To, to, you make sure we're doing the right thing, I guess.
Is that a question?
Yeah, it is a kind of a question. We need some direction, I guess, as a small board.
Well. I mean, obviously the select board can have authority over class four roads and legal trails, and whether they're going to be reclassified or. Permitting work to be done within them, and I think it's always good to try to be consistent with ad hoc. You know, I mean, there's enough collective memory probably on this board, but, um. You know, I would encourage you to have policy in place. What you, basically the feedback gave Josh and Governor McCain about Legal Trail eleven. You know, try to sort of, maybe, maybe some of you, some other town has a policy to use as a template. Adopt.
Yeah. John? Danny Collins?
Oh, um, well, I mean, you know, we do have the. Class four road policy, um. And in fact, but we wanted to review that, too, and, um. You know, pretty much wanted input, seeing that. You're the guys that, you know, get the. You know, get the requests and variants and so on. Um, and we just wanted to make sure that, you know, before, um. Before we okay anything, that, uh, you know, it's okay.
Right.
With you folks, too. And, and historically, it's, it's more of a problem with legal trails. Um, because, as we were just discussing. Most of the time, we don't know, know where the trail actually goes. Uh, because it's changed over the years, and, and in class four, um. Oftentimes, you know, people expect us to do what they've done, what we have done in the past. And it's just with so many people moving across four roads. Uh, we just can't afford to do that, so. You know, we, we need something, I think, in, in place where we can make sure that, um. You know, people know, I mean, that's one of the problems that we've had, is that people. Buy land and so on, and think that, you know, they can just. Move there and it will take care of the road, and that's not the case.
Right.
So. I think we need, need an overall plan going forward.
Cause you'd like a class four A and B. So that's either.
As more for road maintenance, I think, but it came to permitting zoning and, um, whatnot. So what. My feelings on it are that, um, it's definitely become a much more prevalent, um, in the last five years, even. A lot of, uh, law happening on the legal trails and. Uh, town trails. Most of the time it's fairly cut and dry, I mean, if they, you know, when I get a curb cut or something, I'm not. Um, looking at myself as enforcement on zoning or ordinances in town, I'm just looking at it from a. Road standpoint, if they need covert, if, you know, covert needs to be provided. Uh, what we have run into a little bit lately is people that have built, um, class fours. Will call in mud season and say. Um, I can't, it's, you know, use the emergency vehicle caveat, and, you know, it's frustrating. Chose to live where they do with less than desirable road conditions and, um, and then want to try to use that, so. Something I don't know if we could catch in, in the zoning or permitting phases of. This. You know, to just try to, um, you know, these, this Legal Trail eleven isn't very. Going to be a lot of interesting parts with that, just because. What little research I've done, it does look like the legal trail is about twenty feet to fifty feet from a woods road that was put in. Um, now obviously somebody logged on, that's kind of being used as the. De facto legal trail now, but, um, whoever that landowner would have every right to block access. As, because it's not, at least according to maps, it's not where the legal trail is. So it's, uh. Definitely an issue, um. Going forward on all of them, but this one definitely is a tricky one.
Is this the only legal trail where there's uncertainty about where the road actually is?
I don't think so. It's. I would say it's. More common than not.
I mean, even, uh, our other roads have history of, um, landowners saying, you know, the road used to be over there. And it shifted, you know, five, seven feet, uh, one way or another over the years. So then those roads are technically surveyed either, um, so we don't really know. We're just going with the assumption that we're in the right of way, but.
In some cases it's five to seven feet, other cases it's way, way off.
Exactly, when you come to the legal trails in the class fours, commonly what happens is either there was an erosion event. Where it washed out a part of the road, somebody just went thirty feet around it. Say where a tree came down, and they just started driving around, and now you're, you're fifty feet off of what was the legal trail. And that's now kind of accepted as legal trail, but legally. It wouldn't be if it was surveyed, or that original trail wasn't where the road was to begin with. So it's definitely an interesting, uh, frustrated, frustrating dynamic because of the development that. I mean, it's the cheaper of the land that's available now, so it's appealing, um. So it's, I think, going to be more commonplace as we move forward.
Well, I agree, um.
It seems, it seems to me that we needed to just have something that people would, so that they realize. Or their, that, or their bank realizes when they go to vulnerable money that. You're on a class four road B, and it means this, or you're on a trail, it means that. Cause I'm not sure, it just doesn't seem people are, are aware of where they're buying the land, and then like Martin said, they get a phone, you know, they make the phone call, oh, I can't get into my house, you know, it's all money.
Well, I think that's the question, that's why we've asked. We're not sure whether to have it on the planning commission side where. All right, you guys come up with ordinance if you're going to build in, you know, off of legal trail. Or do we have it on John's side in the DRB where he puts, all right, you can do it, but. These are the restrictions, and this is what you need to do. So where, you know, because it ends up, it ends up coming to here because Martin hears about it, and. And all of a sudden someone needs, you know, three loads of stay mats so it's safe to get to their home. You know, and they have a permanent home, and they didn't know about it, and, and so.
And there's plenty of strip residences out there that were built numerous years ago on class four legal trails. And what we're finding now is those residents have sold to somebody new who's come in. And perhaps the previous land, the landowner wasn't forthcoming with information, I mean. Recently this winter, first snowstorm, second snowstorm, phone rings, one evening a plow, such and such, or other. You know, we don't follow that, well, we were told that the town does care. So.
Right.
You know, what, uh. What was, what was frustrating to me, particularly the call to build issue, was that. I think it was, to me, it was clear in our, our zoning that they had to go into DRB. To get the permit, especially and, and fix the road. And somehow that the owner never, never, never followed the process. And that's particularly frustrating that, uh, if they get a permanent application. Um, they have to know the procedure somehow, and, and I know our last one in the experience was left a lot to be desired, but. I guess we've got to stop that from happening, that. When you're doing an application, that application, the applicant needs to know right at that point what he needs to do. Or they need to know.
All right, and, and again, back to the cop hill, I, I don't think that was the fault of anything, but the zoning administrator not following through.
Yes.
Um, but what we're more looking for is. Are those things that they need to follow through on, or is this something, again, that we, we just wait? And we push it off to John's group from the DRB and hope that they come up with, um. You know, the. Permit requirements. Deborah, did you have a, an idea?
Well, David, David Stapleton, you really okay? Correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure that the zoning regulations are silent on legal trails, right? We don't have anything in our, in our box of, of what pushes something to the. To the DRB for, for the review, or what stays with the zoning administrator. It's silent, right?
Yeah, pretty much. I think there is some mention, but, uh, it's very, um, ambiguous, I think, yeah.
Well, there's a section in the ordinance that talks about if any development is proposed. That the access is via something other than a class one, two, or three road, or a state highway. The development has to go to the development new board for conditional use. Well, it's not conditional use. But the only criteria we are asked to look at is basically issues of safety. Safety, traffic, lock information, road incite conditions. And then we give them those conditions.
Right.
Up to your point. So usually it's the residence that's proposed, and, um, you know, usually the condition we impose is that. You know, we try to make sure that the length of the right of way is sufficient. Um, and, and the ordinance doesn't really tell us, but I think, based on my experience, I think we suggested a minimum of thirty. I think we suggested a minimum of thirty feet so that you have space for a travelway and ditching to the extent we did and to be able to push snow. And two, that the landowner maintained it such that it's the, the house location is accessible by emergency vehicles all season this year. So, you know, I think if there's going to be changes and you want the development new board to look at other things and development is proposed on a Class Four road or a legal trail, it really needs to go into the zoning ordinance and it's really the purview of the planning commission. And I think the tension in, you know, the town plan and the existing ordinances is historically, the town plan has said basically development is discouraged on these locations because they have poor access. Typically, the reason, you know, people are not living there today that lived there a hundred years ago is, you know, because it's steeper and more remote and it's what, you know, allows, you know, wildlife habitat to, forestry habitat. So, you know, I mean, there's certainly been proposed changes to Act 250. I don't think they've worked through the legislature to try to discourage building of new roads or improvement of new roads so that people are living in these, you know, more remote areas. And, you know, so that's the, you know, tension there. There is a need for housing, there is a need for people with lesser means to be able to afford to buy land and build their house. So, and that's really the planning commission, I think, that can sort through those policy questions.
That's what I am thinking too, John. I, I think, I mean, I do think there needs to be a clear policy about, from the perspective of homeowners and potential buyers of, you know, what can be done with a Class Four road in terms of developing or driveway and who's responsible for what. And that needs to be clear because it has a huge implication for the, the value of the property. And, but on top of that, I think there's, I think we need to do some consideration on a road-by-road basis of whether the town really wants to discourage development on a specific Class Four road. Or maybe the opposite, maybe encourage development. And I'll give you, because I know most about Cobb Hill Road because I happen to live at the corner of it, of the Class Four part, as an example, you know, I think there are a lot of residents up here who were not happy that the road's becoming more developed because they were using it for recreational activities. But, but at the same time, I think there's a case for making it passable to at least a pickup truck, which it's not really now, I mean, it could be, but it's very hazardous, I would say. Because it really separates us from the rest of Moore Town, right? You know, I have to drive, the reason I'm not at the meeting tonight is because it takes me at least twenty minutes to get there and I didn't have that amount of time to come down. So, so, so I, you know, I think there is interest in the Class Four roads for various purposes. I think some owners along some of the Class Four roads might be happy to have them closed off just, you know, no longer be roads at all, be just considered trails and not be developed in the future. But I don't know that. And it seems like we ought to be reviewing them road-by-road and asking ourselves, do we really want to discourage development on this road? Or maybe the opposite in some cases?
I think that's, that's certainly a good idea. Sure. Your name again?
Yeah, my name is Colin and I also live on a Class Four road and I happen to make it, you know, down into the meeting tonight because I think this is very important to discuss about the development of our town and how opening up the Class Four roads to better development can lead to tax generation. And how that can really improve our town, offer more services and, you know, bring more people to our community to provide more tax revenue so that we can have improved schools, improved roads, and our sense of community.
So, Deb, you think it's something that you guys could take on then or take a look at?
Well, let's talk about it in our next meeting, David, I think that's safe to say.
I, I think we could, we could certainly discuss it. I think, as you know, with the wastewater situation, we've, oh, and I guess with the ARPA, we established a committee to, to cover something that's not just people on the planning commission. I think we need other people involved, but if you want to follow that model, I think we could potentially do it. I can take it up at our next meeting, which is two days away.
No, I think that would be good. I know it's going to be something that's going to take, take some time. But we've been wrestling with this for, you know, a few years, what to do. And I think we need to, rather than continue to kick it down the road, well, get some policy in place so that it's clear. And I think that's what people are looking for as well, you know, what they can do and how to do it, how to do it.
Isn't it also relevant to this, as to this gentleman's saying that a lot of the trails, we don't know where they, they have to be, we have to figure out where they are. Whoever's looking into that property has to figure out where the trails are. Most of them, we don't really even know.
Right, and I think that's important to have in our policy as well, is distinguish that and how that's paid for.
Yeah, because it's definitely.
I know we have, we've, last year, put money in the budget to start to identify trails. We're trying to do, although we haven't this year, we've had more of a time trying to get surveyors. But, you know, they just, like everything else. We have money, we know we're going to need to spend some to look. Because Deb, to your question earlier, I mean, I would say probably more than half of the trails or even some of the Class Four, yeah, we're pretty sure it's there. You know, we had over the mountain last year where we, we did a survey and, you know, it was a hundred and fifty feet different than where it had been. So, it's, you know, something that needs to be looked at. But I think we got a plan in place. And John, I know you're, you know, on the other end of it. But we can certainly, maybe on the committee, it sounded like David was leading towards some kind of a committee towards it. If you guys had someone that you wanted to put on that, even. Just because, again, it really helps, I mean, you've seen, you have a lot of experience with it as well. And so that we can get it right. Sure.
Yeah, no, I, I think it's, it would be foolish to probably discourage, you know, the development. What I think is probably going to happen is you'll have an upgraded section of legal trail or Class Four and then there'll be another chunk of land for sale slightly beyond it. And then there'll be some more development. And I agree with Dave. I think most of the feedback that you're going to get back negative is going to be people that have been enjoying these trails themselves, to themselves basically for years. And now they're having to share them, but the land was for sale. So, everybody had the same opportunity to purchase it, so. Time allows, we want to discourage it, but it needs to be a fairly common sense approach to.
Yeah, no, I think, you know, if there's taken any direction from this select board on this, it's, that's what we're, we're not trying to make people jump through hoops. We just want to take a look at it. And I think Dave's approach to, you know, even certain trails, do we want to encourage here or discourage? I, you know, I would have to look at that. Because then you start getting into a lot of maybe legal issues that way. But, you know, something that's, you know, environmentally responsible as well, we, you know, we need to look at that as well, it works in our community. All right. So, Dave, we appreciate you bringing that up. And Deb, thank you for coming as well. We appreciate it. John, you're always welcome. Thank you. We appreciate your expertise. Dave, actually, you and Deb, before you leave, there's a couple of things. I know in new business, and I'm sorry I didn't get back to your email, but I will bring up what you've asked. And we'll go ahead and look at that and try to get that stuff taken care of so it can go on the ballot in March. And the other thing I'd like to do is, I know you guys have an ARPA meeting on Wednes or the 12th, but sometime in November, get you guys here and just kind of discuss what you guys have come up with that. And any recommendations or see where we might be going one way or another. Because we've had, while you were here tonight, we had a few other requests that are, you know, coming in. So, you guys should take a look at those as well.
Why are the ones we invited? Are there others that are already on?
I think we had, there was one that, where was it from? Not the neck of the woods. Mad River TV, I think, had a small one.
Yeah.
It wasn't a lot of money, but I think we should, you know, take a look at it regardless. And I think that's.
Two hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, and then the neck of the woods.
Yeah, that's the neck of the woods, that's what I think.
The other ones we already said.
Right, but they should have a look at that and see what we're thinking on that. All right. Thank, John, do you have anything else for us? That you guys are seeing as obstacles or things that you'd like us to look at or work on?
I wonder, is it clear that, I mean, if somebody has a legal trail and they're going to upgrade it and they're going to do survey work so you know where it is, can you, you can reclassify a Class Three as a Four or a Four as a Three? Once something's a legal trail, can you classify it as a town Class Four highway?
I would think so.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, but I don't think that we're looking to do that anywhere. But people, I mean, if they wanted to bring it up to Class Four standards and then us take over the road, that's a core, right?
I know the town doesn't want to.
Okay, that's, I didn't know whether that's where you were going with that.
So, that would be a transformative change. I'm just throwing it out there.
You know, it's something we could take a look at or we'll ask our attorney, John.
Well, it's an interesting question, I think, because when you look at the Class Four roads and legal trails and where they are and what would happen, you know, I think of Jones Brook and Aaron Brook Road and is it Kelly Brook or Morton Brook?
Yeah, Kelly Brook.
You know, and there's a connector up high and, and there's a connector up high that goes over to Lynch Hill, which is Class Four. And there's a lot of land there. You know, obviously, a hundred and fifty years ago, people lived up there.
They did.
It's close to Monville here, obviously, part of the land that's driving this is. Yeah, people, I think you're going to continue to see that. So, if the town wants growth, yeah. But I think you need to go at it, you know, right now, it's ad hoc.
Right.
Really, the planning commission is supposed to plan and think about these things. There's wetlands and there's.
Oh, no, there's a lot too.
habitats as well, so.
It's not as easy as just saying, this is the policy, you know, you know, what we want to hear. You know, there's a lot, a lot involved. But we need to, again, like you said, it's ad hoc now. You know, what we're telling this gentleman here, you know, you know, we're going to work into the best of ten. That's, that's all we have right now. And, you know, we don't want to, again, putting people through, saying it through hoops, but we need to probably have a better policy than what we have now, which is not. All right. Nice to see you, John. Thank you, Dave, for zooming in. Deb?
Hi.
Thank you. Welcome in here. Yeah, thank you, Craig, for coming down as well.
You're welcome.
And Will, thank you. You're still welcome to stay, so don't have to go. Yeah, you're not taking these with you. See if I should stay for anything else? Oh, you are? All right. Thank you all.
Well, thanks for the.
Yeah, thank you very much. And Shelly? Then Martin's gone, all right, thank you. All right, so we'll. Yeah, Shelly's going to do a couple of things, but then we're going to go ahead into the executive session here. We're kind of select for it here on October 3rd. Just came out of the executive session and I would make a motion to authorize our attorney to file suit to enforce the health order issued on September 19th. Second. John, seconds. Any further discussion? None. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone. And so let's go to reports communications. Sasha, Sasha, we'll start with you, young lady.
Um, are you doing, um, need a motion for just the technicality of the pipe contract?
Need a motion on the technicality of the pipe contract? What's the technicality?
The, just to have a motion on it so that we can, it wasn't ever, a motion was done on that contract.
Oh, we signed it.
Okay, good.
I'll break the motion if we want.
No, this contract was signed, so. Guess that's all right.
I mailed out letters to everybody on the Fletcher Road, certified. That way they, we know that we contacted everyone.
And when does that start?
October 17th.
All right, 17th, Monday, 17th, it'll be closed for how long?
During the day, up to two weeks.
Okay, thank you.
The Pony Farm Road has been, the parking situation has been resolved with the sheriff's office. And there is a road maintenance permit there for Cobden Road. Hunger Valley construction invoice that needs to be approved so that we could pay it. And the MRGP, just to keep compliant for the watershed program. Oh, and also the amending of the minutes.
Second?
The amending of the minutes.
All right, Ray, should I?
Well, I was just going to ask Sasha, where do we stand on the junk car until?
Sheriff's permits, that they have one of their, definitely working on it, it's close to towed.
It's still there, right?
Still there, okay. Well, tow truck can't get up there. And the town can't move it until it's released by the sheriff's department.
All right, so sheriff or the state, I think.
It's either a sheriff or.
Brett Myers is the one I was talking to. I guess Stephen, I already talked to him and given him the VIN number?
Yeah, but you said something about another trooper and that trooper's still here.
Right, I think the trooper. And that's, again, reminding with our contract with the sheriff stuff, more or less for enforcement, those type of things, something like that, more of the state that's going to be there.
I have no other complaints.
No other complaints tonight, Ray?
Nope.
Shelly?
Well, Sean and I talked with Dara at Morfests. Well, more so Sean than me, but about bringing back some of the local road roundtables that they were doing going to different offices because I guess in her running for office, she's found out a lot of people want to do more work on roads and that was something that used to happen. So, was a suggestion to bring it back. was a suggestion to bring it back.
What is it?
The road roundtable, that was through Ridge to River, who sponsor those, and we hadn't had one in a while. And actually, we had just discussed at the last Ridge to River meeting, having one in Motown hosting, but.
That's what Dara was talking about.
But Cory Miller has left Friends of the Mad River, so I don't know, but doesn't mean we can't still do them.
Yeah, because I think it was more like what local people wanted for the roads, what different towns were doing, you know, what people wanted to see for roads, because that was, I guess, a big thing where people wanted funding to go or more work to be done.
Because the roundtables we had was just, those were Ray and myself and then different, the road crew from valley towns.
For the purpose of like making it more user friendly or less car, less vehicle thing for people to run on and bike on?
Just maintenance.
Just find out what everybody else is doing and, you know, tell me, may have a better idea to do something. And then share that idea, you know?
Urban equipment that they use where specific means are, Guts Gary built their own roller for the crater. Maybe we could get an idea from them and, all right, how much did that cost you to do? Does it work? Good, and also, because you were part of it over there, the fire department had a successful Morfests?
Yeah, I think, well, they may, taking out overhead with what, $500, I think?
Yeah, it was, it was right around $500, give or take a few cents here or there.
Good, so Stefan and we had a little bit, but thank you very much for all your work that you did on that. I know you, you know, you're involved with the committee and then just doing all the fire stuff. Great stuff, I mean, obviously he was there to make, you know, a little bit of change, but I think just seeing all the people, meeting all the people was a good thing.
Yeah, absolutely, it's a, it's a great event and it's definitely a good opportunity to get to know new people in town. I met, I met a few different new families that I hadn't met before and was able to introduce myself, and they're like, oh, we've called you for a fire permit and, and things like that. They can finally put a face to the name and it was a great event.
Yeah, good, so. Anything else, Shelly?
Okay, I don't think so.
Well, I always am confused whether I do communications or wait till old business.
Well, I know you've had something in old business as far as the. Town hall, so that would be old business.
I mean. Ray and I talked to Chris Hunt to, for the, at the ready, we're trying to, you know, just, we're working on that. And John and I met with the same gentleman from V-Chance, Chris Hunt, to review the crosswalk, you know, so we're got some steps to take from going forward with that, fill out the permit, he was looking into where the location is. I mean, they've, they've actually redrawn it from the first meeting that we had with John Kaplan from V-Trans as well. So that's a work in progress. And then also I walked over that with Chris Hunt to the radar sign that we're trying to relocate. And I actually just sent him an email today because to have him give us some suggestions. And it's a little bit more than, than just picking it up and moving it, you know, just because of the equipment that's on the pole, so I asked Chris, like, are there, the state must have people they use to move these, you know, rather than us. You know, so as they say, nothing comes easy, you know? I hope we can still move it before the snow flies, but we'll just keep picking away at it, so to speak.
No, those, you gotta grind, so they call it.
Yeah, I mean, but there's so much equipment on the pole, it's, you know, there's a little bit more to it than just unbolted it and moving it down the street, the new foundation or pulling that one out or. Anyways, I'm learning all about those, so maybe I'll be an installer someday, yeah? So those are, those are some communications, I guess.
I got a call from Travis Blodgett and I believe we have the permit to work in the town driveway on Legal Trail 21. Is that right, Sasha? Martin had, I guess Martin had signed off on it, but I don't know that we have. But anyway, he was concerned because he saw a lot of trucks going up there and as far as he knew, there was no, no permit issue. And I believe Gillespie's doing the work.
Yeah, this is it right here.
Okay, so that's. His only concern was the permit? Yeah, right, because there was no, yeah.
So we went up this morning and looked at the work they did, and they did a phenomenal job. It looks like they did everything to, to standards and they seated it down and everything, so it looks like a very well-done job.
That's tremendous, good, okay.
Thank you, Stefan.
And then also, Don and I took a walk on the Town Forest Trail and with the, with Michael Brown in terms of seeing what would, you know, whether we could in fact do some logging there. And it seems like there are three, three different tracks that, that might be feasible for that. Not really to make the town any money, but really for wildlife management purposes. And probably, he said we'd probably end up breaking even. But, so, we're just moving slowly on that.
The forest management is planned, I think, it's just a bit of a, you know, and in two weeks, we're gonna go with another walkabout to look at the Echo class sites and how those tie into the trails and the whole land use policy and where they are and safety and access to them.
Can I, can I ask a question on that subject? So Mandy has been persistent from the school about trees in the classrooms that are dangerous or fallen down already. And she's been reaching out to me, as well as Martin, constantly trying to get us to, to do more with the trees. Not that we're against doing some, you know, some tree work, but it doesn't really. Some of those trees are dangerous and also it seems a little bit out of the scope and we're certainly happy to do them, you know, if they need to be done, but it should definitely be something that is run by you folks, I would believe.
Well, is this, just recently that she's done this?
Uh, within the last week, she sent me another one. She'd like some trees removed in the Echo classes. And then just before school was starting, a large tree had fallen onto one of the Echo classes and, and left some carnage.
Okay, because.
We definitely discussed this.
Yeah, and, and I had, the, the initial tree that you guys took down, right?
No, the, the one that was like falling on the classroom there was, it fell on its own.
No, I know, but. But I'm talking a couple of months ago.
Uh, I think the last one, boy, the last one I remember was just before school was starting.
What's that?
The last one I remember was just before school was starting.
Yeah, okay.
And it, and it had fallen already on the classroom. We just tried to clean it up to make as much room as we could, but it was a good, solid two foot around or bigger.
Okay.
But she, she has reached out since then to ask for more. And I think, I'm fairly certain it was last week, I'm kind of looking through my, my emails. Yes, it was on the 29th, so Thursday of last week.
Okay.
Any chance you have time to meet, there's a couple of my teachers that want to meet about a couple of trees up in the outdoor classroom. So I, I just, like I said, I'm not against it, you know, I, I try to do my part to, you know, the safety of the kids is important. But I don't know where that all falls on, you know, as far as, is it something that you guys want us to continue doing? Or maybe they just move their classroom or, or figure out from, from that what we can do to make it work.
The school carries something, something for, for cutting some trees. Well, we are walking Mandy and some other teachers on the 12th.
Okay.
Yeah, and so we'll definitely make sure we bring it up and please feel free to join us if you want to take a walk. Because one of the other items we're gonna approach you with is also what kind of access there is to the, to a Echo class as far as with an ATV or something, if, you know, you had to get up there, you know?
So, is that, is that work considered part of our, part of our understanding with the town?
The MOU.
MOU?
Yeah, MOU. It probably is not in there, but that's something that we can put in there. So Stefan, if you.
That's a good idea.
Think about, you know, how much time you're putting into this so that we can kind of put a number on that and put it in our MOU?
Yep, when I've done it in the past, I do put the, the code down for, for at the school, which leads Sasha to, to put it in for, for the MOU stuff, if I'm correct.
All right, good, and then, but in the meantime, work with John, because he's our forest tree warden, on any tree stuff, but just keep track of it and we can make it equitable, you know, agreement with them so it's safe. And, you know, it's not costing us a ton to do it.
Yeah, I mean, I think if they're, if they're in a situation where you don't feel it's safe to cut the tree, then we shouldn't do it and they should hire somebody to do it. Right. We shouldn't be asking, local shouldn't be expected to take that risk. Right, right, yeah.
Right, you know, if they're, you know, just a.
If it's a small tree, yeah.
Place you can handle and do otherwise, you should go out to a tree person.
And yeah, I'll stay in touch with, with John moving forward and I think on the 12th, we should hopefully be able to get some, some clarity on what, what they have going on as well.
Good. All right, anyone else, John?
Unfortunately, Stefan, I can't be there on the 12th, but it'll be helpful if you're there, that'll be good.
I'll be there.
Don will be there.
Turn me on for the walk.
Big D will be there. All right, John, anything else to move on?
I just had some questions on, from, for Sasha on some other items that were reports and communication. What, whatever, what happened then with the, the sheriff with Pony Farm Road, yeah?
The deputy stopped here and got the details on what exactly was going on and he stopped. He left here, went right there and talked to them about where they're parking.
Okay.
He told them or asked them to park on the driveway side of their mailbox and stay out of Pony Farm Road.
Okay, all right, so we don't need a letter for that, I guess, okay. And how about Green Mountain Power?
I got ahold of them through the Green Mountain Power portal and somebody called me and said that he was going to follow up on what was going on, it was somebody above Jared.
Okay, good. That's, that's where he, and yeah. Okay.
Thank you, yes. I guess first again, communications or, again, a great Morfests, the whole committee, everyone, I think, really went off well. Thank you for everyone's participation. The cake contest was, was great. I think most of the select work members have decided to take that duty off our.
Pass it on to the road crew.
Oh, John says now he definitely is gonna demand that forever.
Well, the only, only problem is that I ended up holding everybody up. I thought you had eaten the whole piece of cake. I've been doing it enough time that I know you don't eat the whole thing.
So actually 15 pieces of cake.
15 pieces of cake.
Oh, God. It was cute to see your grandson there too.
What's that?
Your grandson was cute. But, so it was nice to see all the families, all the things, so, again, the fire department, great job. Eric, the cakes were good. I was able to buy some jams and jellies from Mrs. Reagan.
Maybe good to space it out a little bit more. I always remember it being.
A little longer.
And it may be good just because I know, like, it was really hard to keep up with fresh trees.
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was, it had been too long in the past, so I think it's too short this year.
Yeah, it probably could have been another hour or so.
Yeah, at least another hour. It'd be nice to have like big blue there to, the truck.
Oh, yeah, people do touch the truck type thing, yeah, well, I think certainly, you know, all suggestions a little bit group will take and I was trying to figure out how to, how to do it better and more, so.
And it all depends, because, you know, you could extend it next year and the weather's gonna be crappy and no one's gonna be there.
Yeah, here I was, but I think there's always two things that could work on, but it'll keep it fresh and going. I think that was, is there anything else? I guess not. I do have, as far as our meeting minutes, I'd like to approve the minutes of 9:19.
What's that, the net?
Is there any further discussion on those? All in favor, vote aye. And I do want to amend sort of meeting minutes for June, pardon me, July 25th. And when we were setting the tax rate, I made a motion and I did not use the word ARPA funds and I need to put that in, so I am willing to accept the calculations as presented using $35,415.16 of ARPA funds due to lost revenue in 2021. Thank you, all in favor, vote aye. All right, so that's done so that we can use those ARPA funds for that. So let's go ahead, we have some old business. Don, why don't you go ahead and start, you have a few things that you wanted to chat about?
Well, just quickly on the town garage. So Hunger Valley Construction, there's gentleman Alex Tolsky. I'm not doing a very good job pronouncing his name, but he's been great. He's done some work at the town hall, which is what Sasha was referencing, we need to improve some of the sharing that's covered in the grant. But he's also taken on looking into solving the condensation problem at the town garage. And so, like he called me the other day, he's found a contractor, you know, an HVAC contractor, who actually has suggested what apparently was in, from talking to Martin, was in the original design, which is to have two fans, you know, fairly large fans up in the ceiling that would keep the, you know, the air, you know, because it's a radiant slab and it goes up. And, you know, to, to do that install, so it requires some electrical and, and then there's these fans installed and it's somewhere in the $40,000 range to do, I mean, he's, you know, he'll get a written quote and the whole thing, all the details. But I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention for us to think about it as we get into budget time, thinking about how we'll. how we might fund something like that, because it's certainly something that needs to get taken care of, or we research if that's, you know, maybe this, we can check with someone else if that's a solution, but anyways, at least it's, it's just some progress, you know, cause we haven't really, this has been now kind of two years that we've been trying to get this thing rolling, so. That's the update on that, I don't know what folks think of that, I'll ask them to, to, uh.
Don, I have to see what he has, but you gotta.
Do you remember where their fans went back?
There was a talk about it, and I, you know, it's been so long, but I don't know why they were eliminated, to tell you the truth, but I, I remember that coming up one time or another. Nah, I don't know why.
It seems like that could be a.
So would Efficiency Vermont be able to tell us?
Who?
Would Efficiency Vermont be able to?
Oh, it could maybe double back with those guys, yeah, that's a good idea, yeah.
It'll be a viable solution, that sounds.
Yeah, so maybe I'll get the, the quote, you know, the proposal from them, and then something, then I can run it by
Bring up those guys, yeah.
Efficiency Vermont by saying, yeah, it's two fans that are twenty-five, or, you know, whatever the size is, or something, and they might have some feedback on it.
Not good. Good to see some progress there, though.
Yeah, okay, so, I mean, we haven't gotten anywhere with the tree in the back yet, but we're working on that. Anybody here be able to plant the tree and take some branches off? Not from this group, but I didn't think so. So town hall, uh, the town hall, just a, uh, update is that, um, Cory and I met with Cheryl Lynn, and, you know, went over the transition to the management of the town hall, so we're pretty well set with that, and talked about the management plan, which is, um, the only thing really that's, could be open for discussion as we go along is the cleaning, you know? Um, I think in the current plan, we're saying one day, or, and then there was some discussion, should we give it three days? And should we be charging the rental person the cleaning fee, kinda thing, the cleaning before and cleaning after? So that seemed to be the only thing that we're really.
Trying to figure out.
Kinda figure out, um, as it stands now, I believe Maggie comes in after a, a, an event and cleans, and, um, and, you know, reports if anything has been damaged, or.
Right.
Anything like that.
How much does that run, do you know, where?
She usually runs between an hour and four hours, it depends on what's going on.
I mean, in the plan, I think it's listed as seventy, you know, like a seventy-five dollar clean charge type of thing.
Yeah.
To the rental.
I saw, I didn't have a chance to read that email that you sent today.
So anyways, you know, other than that, it's, we're, we're ready to roll with, you know, with our six month, um, management of the town hall, so. That was an update there, and in terms of, we're still, um, in the weeds, so to speak, you know, working on with the architect and design stuff, and, um, coming up with a, you know, I mentioned to you that I thought we'd be able to do it at the ten seventeen meeting, have a presentation, but I don't think we're quite ready. So maybe November first, we might need the rest of this month to hammer out some more details.
Just takes time.
So that's, that's the update on that one. That's all I got.
So that's, um, anyone else have anything first? Uh, old business, we have, we're gonna hear from the ARPA funds, so Sasha, maybe the. Yeah, probably November, first meeting in November.
Yeah.
It'd be good to hear from them on that, um, legal trails.
I was wondering on, on that, the legal trails, um, Sasha, have you followed up on anything on the, uh, on legal trail seventeen?
Yes, um, I contacted Vermont Survey, and he called me back, and he's wanting to go out and make sure that it is definitely marked, and he's gonna make sure that it's plain and simple where it is.
Alright, and, and Ray and I had talked last meeting, were we gonna cut trees, or was bludgeon?
I think he had a, we can check with him, there was a, an agreement that we had, had to be done within a certain amount of time.
Or else we do.
Or else we can do it.
And I don't know if the lips are good, over there, over there, they must've cut some trees, right? Have they fixed the road, or, isn't that what they did, or?
That was twenty-one.
That was twenty-one.
Oh, oh, okay.
Right, so seventeen is the, uh, the new trail. Of the one that we moved.
Okay.
Cause I, and, I mean, I, I certainly don't remember saying that, or that Guy Martin could bring material in, I mean, that was, that's what he was claiming.
But Guy Martin said he could bring, no, we never said Guy Martin could bring material in.
Yeah, that's, that's.
We, uh, if someone wants to come to the board, just like any of the legal trails, or whatever, and they wanna road permit to upgrade something, we can look at it, but, um, you know, we very, you know, I think, and I remember it plain as day, um, Ray saying, you know, well, we need to cut that thing from whatever it was.
The right hole right away.
The hole right away, um.
Exactly, it'd be identified.
Oh, right. And it's all, I walked up there, there's really, there's actually not a ton of wood that was on there.
No.
It was, it was all junk, um.
But it had to be identified.
Right.
It should, should be identified, while it's all fresh, you know?
Yeah, right. And it was, we have, how wide was it, do you remember, have we go back and look, or is it just one rod, two rods?
I think it was two rods.
I don't think it was even that.
We'll have to look back in the agreement, but it's there, and it's, I think it's standard.
Nine and one rod, God, I thought it was two, then two rods would be thirty feet, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it was almost, it might've been, because it wasn't any less, cause I remember we didn't wanna have an issue where it was one rod, so it's about fifteen and a half feet, or whatever it happened to be, um.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, I probably gathered it myself, actually. Um. One flag, like, probably has a name. Ah, you never know.
Want me to flip on another light on, Tom?
Yeah, if you could for this day, I can. Thank you, Don.
Yeah, whatever you want.
You know, it doesn't, on this particular, says go with it. It would take me a minute to find it, but we have what it is, um, but we will. Um, have to make sure that it's done, but will we do have the road crew do that, or how?
That's what we were thinking, you know, if they can do with that, obviously the chief is gonna do it.
Yeah, cause again, I have something to do in the winter here, after it's frozen.
Sure.
You know, it's the best time to do that.
Yep.
And just go pile it up, or burn it, or whatever.
Yeah.
Chick it, or whatever. I think that's a good idea. Um, also with legal trails, Sasha, have you, I know we were having an issue with, uh, surveying, is there any?
We don't have enough money.
We don't have enough money, no, no. How much, uh?
He said it could be upwards of thirty grand.
For one trail?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
So unless somebody's really pushing it, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't reckon.
I don't know if we really need, you know, how much to really, I wanna preserve this, you know, but.
Yeah, I, I think actually it's one of those things where we may want to, um, start a fund. Like the Bridge and Culver Fund.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I think that's a great idea, actually.
And have, take this, we'll start it before the end of this year, so we can take the money that we put in for this budget, feed it with that, and then ask the town on an article each year to fund, whether we five, or six, seventy, whatever, a thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so we have that money there, uh, so when we get pushed, when we need to do a survey, or once we get substantial money, where we can start doing the surveys.
Yes.
Um, but it's gonna take a little time, and.
Yeah.
Wouldn't this, wouldn't this also be something that, uh, might get looked at with the planning board, and the, or the, this multi, I think you suggested the day, but maybe there's a couple other people than just the planning board.
Yeah.
And maybe in that process, also addressing the whole thing about surveying of the trails and stuff.
No, I think that will have to be in there.
Especially if people are.
And who's gonna, who's in the responsibility for it.
Yeah.
Um, because I think that, that's gonna have to fall under a whole more.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it seems like that's the route we're going.
Yeah, which was good, and I'm glad there was no pushback on it.
Well, so, they don't know how much it costs.
They don't know how much it costs yet, but, uh, but no, I think that's the way to go, because we can't afford, you know, one person, much less three or four people, say, well, I wanna build out here.
Yeah.
Um.
Well, yeah.
We got a lot of trails.
Right, we got a lot of trails, and then we start saying, well, go ahead, and, and then the other landlord, Susan, we just weigh in, and it's, um, unfortunately, it's a cost that someone's got to bear, and it can't be us.
I just, I think in a, in a task meeting, to, to, I hear one, someone on the board say, like, some of the other towns, they, like, ways feel a bit more, they don't do anything with their trails, right?
Yeah, very possible, that's what they say, yeah.
I, I don't know, I was just wondering if they, you know, they have, they're, that's it, that's the trail, or whatever, we got nothing to do with it. I, I don't know if that's what you want.
Sometimes they throw across four roads, too.
Yeah, which I, I think we wanna keep all the real estate we can.
Oh, no.
I, I don't, I don't think I'm suggesting that, but, um, yeah, they may not, but again, here, I think, again, in Moretown, we have all this lake, and I mean, we're, that's why we're in Moretown, um, and it needs to be some middle ground where it can be developed, and.
Yeah.
Where it's preserved as well, so hopefully this group that we put that task to can do that, um, but also keep the town off the hook, repaying everyone's. Everyone's speed, I know it can be expensive, but, you know, it can be prorated when someone else moves in down the road, you know, you charge, you know, they have to buck up for what was done before them, or something, I don't, I don't know, it's too much for us to do, but, um, so we got the condensation, we got the stormwater project that Clark spoke with us tonight, nothing on the gravel pits, uh, funds for River Road paving project. Still, you're, uh, you know, you cooked a hell of a cake the other day, Sasha, you should have a bake sale weekly to find some funds. Um, tanker truck, fire department, I did run by Stefan to see if they had any alternative fuel vehicles. There was some, I don't know if you guys saw last week, or a couple of weeks ago, there was some funding went through, um, and so he was gonna look into that, it's, uh, electric ones would be, I think, you know, those million dollar trucks, but he said there were some options where, where he thought that a truck would shut down, different things, so he's gonna look into that, so there may be some, some funds there, um. So, and is that, did everyone get their ballots in the mail?
Yes.
Yep. So what, did, I have an open line now, is, is that on that? What were you talking about, it's mine, I thought.
We just got it, it was Saturday or Sunday, mine came Sunday.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
We, I can't get mail, like, during the regular week, can you get it on Sundays?
No, we don't, we, we sometimes, we don't get it during the week, and then it came on Sunday, we can get it any Friday or Saturday, and then it came.
The postmaster, if he doesn't get it during the week, I mean, he, he can't.
I'm not claiming, I'm just saying.
No, I know, I know.
No, that's when it happened to come, is we got mail on Sunday.
Yeah, often times it shows up at seven o'clock at night.
What?
We're awesome, we have Xena, Xena's great.
Xena, wow.
Yeah.
We don't have Xena.
I think Xena's near retirement, though, unfortunately. No?
No, we don't.
Good.
Fortunately, we don't have regular.
Alright, so, we got that coming up, budget stuff we gotta get working on, I know you sent some mornings out to people, or letting people know what we're looking for.
Martin's got, they got back to me, and they're still working on theirs, I totally knew that that was gonna happen, but most others have gotten back to me, and started putting them on the list.
Alright, so we can do that, so each meeting going forward, we can put some time aside to do the budget stuff, and take a look at that. Um, that would be good. Alright, that's it, um, aside for new business stuff, anyone else have anything new, exciting they wanna share with us?
I'd like a nice ladder truck, nice.
Alright, let me put this on mute.
I thought you were gonna say you wanted one of these, uh, pastries.
One of these pastries, we can leave you one here, and you can come get in the morning, Stefan, if you want.
Are they worth it?
Oh, my God, very good. Yeah. Now that.
Well, I'll have to sneak in first thing in the morning.
You should.
Yeah. Alright, well, if there's nothing else, thank you, Orca, for coming tonight. Uh, everyone, thank you for your time and efforts, um, and we will see each other in, uh, a few weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks, so, uh, we have a few things to sign. Ray already signed these.
Signature's getting better, isn't it? Well, it, it looks less like Tom's than it.
Jesus Christ, wow.
I think that was a date done, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think it was, shot right across the bow.
I think it motivated Ray to make sure this ARPA more concise, yeah.
You already signed that one, I'm pretty sure, so.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I put my first, middle, and last name on my notary stamp, which means now when I notarize everything, I have to sign my whole name, yeah, a lot of fun.
So how was your, uh, your, you going over there in Berlin?
I love it.
Oh, terrific, nice.
It's, it's great, we finally all got moved around, we're all in our own offices.
So what do you love about it, I mean, it sounds like having your own office.
Well, I had my own office before, too.
Alright.
But, um, I don't know, it's just different every day.
You guys work very hard.
I'm busy from when I walk in the door at seven thirty until I walk out the door at four.
Well, maybe that's it, cause you're nicely busy, keeping, yeah.
If it's not, utilities, taxes, doing research, posting invoices, scanning stuff in the bowl.
Do you think, um, kinda what is your biggest thing that you do over there?
Um, well, right now, it's gonna be sewer and water.
Sewer.
Yeah, cause we're, we're just came back, so we have to do all our sewer and water bills, sewer and water bills have to go out, the liquid tax bills have to go out in another another fifteen days, so.
Maybe get over here someday and give Sasha a few tips on, you know, how to do some stuff.
I still walk down the hall, and I'm like, God, I think I've missed this.
So you're assistant treasurer or assistant?
Assistant treasurer.
Very good. Anything else, folks? Alright, so I'll move to Jer.
Second.
All favorable to I? All favorable, aye?
Aye.
Alright, well, thank you, everyone.